And now we're going to move into our workshop on JFCK cellphone rules. Dr. Warren, do you want me to give people context on this, or you want to jump in?
You're welcome to.
Beautiful. So just as a reminder, the R policy is not a policy for any, our policies are connected to other policies that the board votes on. Our policies are the rules that match up within, let me try, let me just slow down a minute for a second. So the R policies are connected to policies that the board votes on, and they're basically like an implementation plan and the rules around the policy. With the cellphone policy that we passed, there was a kind of a delay on getting these to the point that the board could see them along with the vote. And so we wanted to make sure that folks had a time to look at those, to ask questions, and also so that the community could see them as well. So we put this on here, just as a general note, like, this isn't a normal process that we would have for an R policy. Usually it would just come along with the policy and it would just continue forward after the board voted on the primary policy. But I'm excited to turn it over to Dr. Warren, because I know that she's been putting in a tremendous amount of work into these rules. So whenever you're ready.
Superintendent Scallon, were you about to say something? Okay. So, and yeah, just a slight bit more context around the rules. So when we're doing just a basic edit of a policy, it's pretty easy to bring the rules along with the policy. In this situation, because there was such a pretty significant rewriting of the policy, which was happening right up until the last minute, and then there were amendments all the way through. And so in order to make the rules fit the policy, we had to make sure we were clear on what the policy was that was being adopted. So part of what's happened over the last few days is just going back, making sure we're aligning the draft rules to the policy, and then also getting lots of input from our school leaders and our district leaders on what was in here. And again, this is, the rules are not something that the board votes on. But because this is such a kind of significant policy and accompanying rules, it's gotten a lot of public attention. And it's kind of complex. We want to make sure that we're getting just ongoing input, both from you as a board, from members of the public who may see this and have thoughts, and from our schools. This will not get voted on, but of course, if you have feedback, we want that. And there will be also an accompanying document that we use internally that helps us get down to even more detail than what you're seeing here in the rules. Really down to the nuts and bolts of how cellphones get stored during the day, that kind of thing. And so what I'm going to do is just briefly walk you through the current set of rules that we have in progress. We're calling these working draft, because we will continue to talk about these next week when we have our leadership retreat with school leaders. But this does already take into account a lot of, a lot of input that we've gotten from them so far. And the other thing that I've been doing in parallel to working on this is starting to line up the actual materials that we may need. So at the moment, we are working on the assumption that we'll be purchasing pouches to store phones at the high school level. We're still trying to figure out with our middle school leaders whether or not that makes sense for the middle schools. At the elementary level, we don't really foresee a need for particular storage, because there are so few devices coming into schools at this stage. So so let me just kind of walk section by section. And if you have a question in a particular section, please go ahead and interject so that I can make sure I address a question or thought, you know, feedback is great, too. So the first section differentiates between elementary school and then secondary schools. Again, we're not having a major issue at the elementary level, and hope that that continues to be the case. In most cases, students at the elementary level really don't need to have devices at school. Our school leaders have said they've seen a few smartwatches. That's mostly what they're seeing at this point. We would encourage families to leave those at home, but if for some reason they feel like their child needs to bring it to school, then it will need to be kept inaccessible to the student. Our elementary schools have suggested that it's possible to keep it inaccessible by having it in the student's bag in the cubby, because they don't really access their cubbies during the day. And then at the middle and high school level, we are committing to the superintendent or designee working with the school leaders to work through the detail of the device storage. Again, we think that's probably the use of the pouches, the mocking pouches at the high school level. And we're still deciding at the middle school level whether that is what makes most sense. The way these rules are written gives us some flexibility to figure out what makes sense, and also to potentially change it down the road if we end up deciding that we didn't go with pouches, for example, but then we think we should have for middle school, and we could add them. So we wouldn't have to change the rules at that stage. We would still be within, within the bounds of the rules. But we do want to make sure that the process is simple, efficient, that it's not cutting into instructional time, and that it's not placing an undue burden on people. And part of the intent, as I understand it, behind the policy was to take some of the pressure off of teachers in particular, and not to take away from learning and learning time. So that needs to be part of this process as well. There are many different mechanisms we can use for storing pouches, and so we're exploring those. And it may actually be a combination, because even if we end up going with pouches, there probably needs to be a backup method in case a student doesn't have a pouch, if they forget it at home or something. And then, one of the things that we heard as we were engaging the public around this was just, what about, you know, the what ifs? Like, what if a student comes late or leaves early or whatever? So the rules just point out that as we're working through these detailed procedures for every school, there has to be a system in place for dealing with these types of issues. Students coming late, leaving early. And then just clarification here, that devices really need to be turned off before they're putting into whatever storage. But what we don't want is lots of cellphones going off in pouches or wherever they're being stored. That would not be very helpful. This goes into a little bit more detail about the exceptions, which we have spent quite a lot of time talking about, both here in the board meetings and in public engagement sessions. This, again, tries to go into a little bit of detail around the likely types of health-related needs we could imagine. Things that may come out through an IAP or a 504 plan. But we will have a common form and a common process through which students and families can submit a request for an exception. Those will need to be approved by the principal or the lead teacher of the school, and then by their relevant assistant superintendent, so elementary or secondary assistant superintendent. That will need to have a rationale and the associated documentation. And then that will get responded to in writing, so that the student and the family have an understanding of what the response is, and what the period of time is. So it may not be that every exception is forever. It could be that it's a time limited thing. There's an appeals process here in case it does not, you know, if family feels that the request was rejected inappropriately, it can get appealed to the superintendent. And then we want a sort of an end date, an expiration date for these exceptions, so that they don't just carry over year to year. People need to kind of reestablish the need for an exception. Let me just pause there. Are there any questions or thoughts on the first two sections?
Yes.
What, my brother?
My first question is about the watches. I know that it has to be excused for a specific reason, but what if, like, health issues is one of them, like, you know, a health monitor, but also like prayer times and stuff? So would that be an accessible thing, or is that something that the principals have to decide on with the superintendent?
Do you mean for the watch to sort of flag for a student that it's time for prayer?
Yeah, so like, my watch tells me it's when it's, when it's prayer time, and things like that, so.
That is interesting, because that is not one that has come up in any of our public engagement sessions. And it would be great to hear the board's thinking on that. My instinct is that we can probably find other ways to have the student, you know, alerted to or track what time it is using their Chromebook or the clock in the school. So I think we may be able to find some relatively easy ways around that, but I'm not sure if others here have thoughts based on the conversation.
Yeah, if there's some wiggle room with Chromebooks, it would be great, but it's like something you have to probably download or whatever. Yeah, but if I don't have my phone, my Apple Watch, just like, you know, it's, I'm just, and I'm just putting this as a, as a question, because I don't know how many youth do use that, but I, I'm really on top of it for that.
Yeah, no, I'm really glad you raised that. It's, it's interesting that, I feel like we got a lot of the similar comments over and over in the public engagement, and that is not one that came up. So I'm glad you said it.
I don't see any other person with their hand up. Wait one sec. Yeah, I see you with your hand up, but just in response to that, that point. So Board Member Bryden, go ahead.
Thank you. I couldn't tell whether you were saying that, I don't see any other questions. So just sort of tying into that, I'm wondering if there would be an opportunity to, for the exceptions, to, instead of getting into the weeds on a number of specific scenarios, to direct administrators to look for alternatives. So if, basically if a family is requesting an exception for a particular reason, to instruct or direct administrators to look for alternative ways to solve the challenge or the issue that's being brought up as part of the analysis of whether to approve the request for an exception.
Yeah, that's a great point. We can add that in.
Super. And then I had two other, two other quick things. So, and this might be later in the document, but in terms of devices that are, that don't fit in a pouch, I'm curious what, so for example, if somebody brings a personal laptop, I don't, I don't know if they make pouches that are laptop sized, or what we would be doing for that.
Yeah, I mean, my hope is that we will find sufficient ways for people to feel their needs are being met, that they won't feel they need to bring the laptop to school, but if they do, we'll have to find an alternative and safe storage location, probably somewhere in the office where it can be locked away. I don't envision buying pouches for laptops, although I suspect they do have them that big.
Yeah, okay. And then my last, the last point ties in with that a little bit, in a sense, but, so I made a note about the elementary school not having a structure for this, because it's pretty infrequent. So I just wanted to, and the tie-in is the scenarios where there might be somebody who brings a device to school that we're not thinking, you know, a lot of people will. So, for example, with both the laptops and elementary school, there might be some situations where, you know, a student splits time between parent homes and might need to like, use the going to school as the pivot point between homes and be bringing devices for that reason, not necessarily to try to use them during the school day. Also, at the elementary level, I think particularly as you get into fourth and fifth grade, I think there are some people who are using smartwatches to make sure their kids are safe if they walk to school without a grownup. So, you know, making sure that that's accounted for. And I want, I just want to make sure that we're not relying on, oh, it's off and in the backpack, so it's fine, and inadvertently landing some kids in a disciplinary situation because they've gone to their backpack and they've looked, you know, they've succumbed to the temptation of the smartwatch in the middle of the day. I'm not sure that it's necessarily going to be a huge issue, but I wanted to flag it.
So, Member Bryden, can I just clarify? Thank you for all of those points. I'm not totally clear on, would that change your thinking about how the rules are written with regard to elementary school?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a way to provide, so for example, let's say you have a fifth grader who has a smartwatch, and they get to school and they put it in their bag, as they're supposed to do, but like, in the middle of the day, a teacher sees this kid with a smartwatch, and ends, and that kid ends up being, you know, you know, going down the path towards progressive discipline, for example. I would want to make sure that we have situations where there is not necessarily a, not something where we would need to scale it, but a mechanism for that kid or any kid who, who needs to, to put their smartwatch in the office, so that we're setting kids up for success.
Yeah, I got it. That's helpful. So we did, there's a section down below that gets to progressive discipline, and it doesn't go into a lot of detail, but in conversations with administrators, the assumption is that, really at all grade levels, the first step would be to send the student to the office, and the, whatever the device is, would just be kept by the school leaders during the day. It's not like the student's going to be suspended, or, you know, chastised, or whatever. It's, it's really more like a reminder, and, you know, and the device gets held in the office. So when we talk about progressive discipline, part of the point of that is that it starts at a, at a very low level. It's a, it's meant to be supportive, not punitive.
Yeah, and I'm just, I want to be mindful of the fact that there's, I just, I want to be mindful of the perception, you know, and making sure that we don't have kids or groups of kids who are either getting the self-perception that they did something, you know, that is incurring discipline in ways that other kids aren't, and just making sure that if, you know, if they're, I just want to make sure that kids have an opportunity to say, look, I'm here, here's my smartwatch, put it in the office, because this is the right thing to do, and just making sure that that's a possibility.
I'm just, almost just like hearing kind of like, it's that like backup plan piece, that if a kid or a family self indicates that this is going to be, you know, too accessible, that there's an option.
Yeah.
Did you have another question after that, Board Member Bryden?
No, sorry, just having lowered my hand. Thank you very much.
No, that, that's all right. I just, I couldn't, I couldn't remember how many you said at the beginning. Yeah, go ahead.
Use the microphone?
Yes, we use the microphone.
I had a question. When you were talking about students being able to appeal an exception, this popped into my head. It hasn't been mentioned yet, but I've heard from several teachers that they're really worried that this is going to fall upon them to sort of police the cellphones. And also, some of them are not that comfortable talking with their building administrators about it. Is there any way that a teacher could reach out to a point person at central office and say, I'm having this issue, or, you know, we're seeing a whole bunch of exceptions that maybe there shouldn't be? I just, I feel like teachers need, are going to need a chance to kind of troubleshoot and maybe vent a little bit.
So I have a few thoughts on that. One is just to reinforce that my understanding all the way through this process has been that a major, one of the goals, I mean, students were the primary reason, right, but another underlying goal was to try to take some of the pressure off of teachers who are currently feeling like they're having to manage this a lot, and to make it a very clear sort of across the board understanding that we have device-free schools, and so building more of that culture. And then if there is, you know, somebody who, a student who messes up, or, you know, forgets, or brings it, is having a little trouble letting go, that that immediately gets referred to an administrator, so the teacher doesn't have to deal with it. I hear what you're saying is that maybe not everyone will feel comfortable with that, and I think that's, you know, sort of a muscle we'll have to build then, and those, that may be a bigger issue that we need to then look at, you know, in terms of fostering that communication and relationship building in the school. I will note that on the exception piece, we have built in here that all of the exceptions have to get approved by the assistant superintendent at the network level. So they, we will be seeing all of the exceptions centrally, and part of the point behind that is so that we can norm across schools and make sure that we're being consistent in how we do that. I don't know, Dr. Scallon, is there something you might want to add around, you know, the the disconnect there?
No, I mean, I think what you said is exactly right. We also have a pretty consistent structure where if people have questions where it's not to the principal, they may go to the assistant superintendent. I can also tell you, there's a lot of emails that come to myself. We can also be clear that the work of Sarah and Cheryl around this, and the ability to reach out to them.
Thank you.
And soon to be Board Member Sawtelle, are you hearing that people are worried about managing the exceptions, like, who has what exception, or managing the cellphones in general of kids that don't have them in pouches, or whatever it might be?
I'm trying really hard to be diplomatic. With so many situations that have happened over the last few years with issues this big, the burden has fallen on the teachers to manage it, and administrators are not always consistent from student to student. And so it comes down to a power struggle. And I know teachers have been pretty vocal about, especially Portland High School teachers have been pretty vocal in opposition to this, and their concern is that it is going to come down to them. They're going to break trust with a lot of students, and there'll be a lot more conflict than there needs to be, just because of a lack of consistency.
Thank you. That's helpful. Board Member Ali?
I do think that's going to be a, like, a significant improvement overall, because, I mean, the teachers are already checking kids, checking kids to, that like, are not following the policy, you know, so it's, now that they have a more stricter policy, they might, they may have to deal with it a little bit in the beginning of the, of the year, but I think throughout, throughout the year, the culture is going to start to stick in, and, and like, I guess, putting their foot down with administrators of the school is going to be a lot more significant as well. So I apologize to the teachers that are going to have to deal with this in the first place, but just, we're hoping that this is, that's why we passed this policy.
And I want to move us into the rest of the rules, but I also think, like, you know, I'm working with Ryan to figure out, like, what are the updates that we're going to get at the board level in the fall to hear what the feedback is. And, you know, I think we acknowledge that, like, there's going to be a learning curve, right, at the beginning, and, but we're not just going to let that curve sink, right? So we're really hoping that we will learn in that curve, and then implement and change what needs to be changed.
Chair, if it's okay with you, since we're only on section three, and we've got up to 14 or 15, I might just briefly touch on, on the sections below and ask folks to, to make note of questions and comments, and then maybe we come back to the questions at the end.
Yep.
So section three is, is pretty straightforward, essentially just allowing use of devices during extracurricular programming, if it's approved by the, the coach or advisor. That's consistent with the prior policy and rules. Safe and appropriate use, just tries to ensure that we're in those cases where students may actually end up using a device in school, that we have laid out the normal, these are the standard expectations that have been set in the past, and would continue here around safe and appropriate use. So that, I don't think any of that is language that would be very surprising to anyone. Consequences for violations of the device-free rules. So there's been a huge amount of work going on recently with the Progressive Discipline Committee, and so we want to make sure that, that what we do here is aligned to that. And so we have referenced that here, and we will make sure to continue, you know, a conversation where we're bringing these two pieces of work together. So we're not going into detail about that here, because we want to make sure that it sits within the Progressive Discipline document. Recognition of adherence, oops, sorry, to device-free school rules. So this was a recommendation from our culture and community team members, just wanting to not only have their, have consequences for violations of the rules, but making sure that everybody's thinking about how to reinforce positive behavior and celebrate that, consistent with our commitment to PBIS. Technology to support educational needs. This is trying to be responsive to a lot of the questions that were raised as we were doing the community engagement. People worried that if cellphones are not in schools, then how are teachers and students going to manage their way through various academic pieces of work where, for example, they're in art class and they're using cellphones for cameras, or scientific calculators, calculators came up as another example, or phones that multilingual students may be using for translation purposes. So these are all things that can be addressed through other forms of technology and school-owned technology, and the rules are just specifying here that, that we will identify those needs and we'll fill the gaps. Another major concern that was raised as we went through that process was just how are, everybody's gotten so accustomed to being able to communicate in real time via text, via phone. How do we make sure that if a family needs to reach their student, that they can? And then vice versa, if a student really needs to reach their family? So there are a number of different ways that we can address these things, and I think it's important, and the rules do here differentiate between an emergency situation where there's a need for immediate contact versus other situations where it might be important, but not quite so urgent. So we will be working with our schools over the next few weeks to make sure that we have those alternative communications mechanisms in place for the start of school, and that they are, you know, communicated out clearly for students and families. We do note here that guardians should minimize communication with students during the school day, so that, I think, you know, will be a little bit of a shift in culture for some people, and that's probably important, just to name, that it's, it's going to be a little bit different. And then, a sort of a reinforcement of what our emergency protocols are, and those are actually kind of laid out in some detail in the emergency plan that we just looked at, or you all passed tonight. But we do have systems for communicating to families through Reach My Teach when something goes on. And then there are also other folks that have been identified that need to be able to communicate sometimes with students, and be they coaches who apparently have often been using sort of text groups to communicate with students. There are other times, too, when students may need to communicate with an employer or somebody outside the building. So we're going to be looking at these communications mechanisms pretty comprehensively to make sure that we are touching on these different areas that were raised during the, the community engagement. The responsible use is just noting that in some cases, we may actually be giving students more equipment in the form of, say, a pouch, and that just means that there's one more thing for us to all take care of, and wanting to make sure that we're being thoughtful about how we care for, for things that belong to the schools. A lot of questions were raised around associated costs, so just trying to define and clarify here that the district will ultimately, you know, end up paying for these things. In the short run, that's going to come from the, the district budget, and ultimately will be sitting in the school budgets. So this year, we'll figure out what we need in order to get the, the year launched, and then in subsequent years, we'll make sure that that gets incorporated into the regular budget process. Eleven, we know that Eleven, we know that the communications around this are incredibly important. And I mean, it sort of starts here in all these conversations we've been having at the board level. But we will begin sending out more sort of comprehensive communications, both from the district and then expect our schools to do a lot of that work of communicating with families, what the policy is, the rules, and in particular, the procedures and the expectations that they can expect to see at their respective schools. We already point, this is section 12, our schools have some degree of education on digital citizenship. It's something that many of our librarians are doing and in other cases, teachers, technology teachers and others. But we want to make sure that that continues and grows and that we're also reaching our families with that and staff, not just students. Number 13, there have been questions raised about what does this mean for adults? The policy did not specifically address adults, but it, I think there was a fair amount of consensus, I guess, that, that adults should be trying to model and, and help students see how to, how to sort of stay off phones. So ideally not being on phones when they are in class with students or supervising students. And then 14 is just a commitment to continue to monitor this work. As Chair Lentz said, we know this is going to be, you know, a, a learning process for us and that we will figure out what works right for Portland Public Schools. This has been done in other places before, but we need to figure out how it works best for us. And so we will be looking at all kinds of student data in order to see what's working and then gathering input from people and, and adjusting as we need to along the way. And with that, I will turn it back for questions and thoughts.
Board member Opperman, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for all that work. A lot. I know it's a lot. Overall, the only thing I wanted to question was the communication to the community, to the parents, and having schools do it, which that is one place it should come, but that the message is consistent across the district. And also that this communicated to people that may not be part of the district, parents, but like doctors, you know, and of the sort. So that the understanding is this is, we're working on this, this is the reason we're working on this and we need your support. But I, the rules, this kind of stuff, I would really hope was very, very clear and consistent, you know, K-12. And so people knew what to expect the next stage. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member Lena?
Thank you. Yes, I had a question and sort of a suggestion, and I don't know how this would fit into the rules. But something I've observed in my time in the schools is sort of like unauthorized, unnecessary, excessive use of school provided devices. So in terms of like, you know, being on YouTube when you're supposed to be watching a video that your teacher assigned you in Google Classroom. So like, how are, how is the school department going to be helping teachers keep their classes on the correct site that they're supposed to be on? It's nearly impossible to see the screen of a student who's sitting like, I can't see what's on your screen, Dr. Warren. And that sort of situation happens all the time in classrooms. So I would really love to see a way that we can support educators to make sure that they're not having to monitor that. And then another thing that I would love to see, and this maybe goes along with the digital citizenship piece or the adult modeling of positive behavior, is a way to create a resource for educators to have things, games, whatever, resources that they can use during transition times or downtime, you know? I think a lot of that was lost during the COVID period when we were relying so heavily on screens. You know, watch this video, we have 10 minutes before we have to go to music class or things like that. I would much rather have the teachers have a resource where they can say, we've got 10 minutes, I'm not sure what to do with the group. Oh, let me look at this, you know, resource that I have from Portland Public Schools. Oh, we could play Heads Up 7-Up or something like, that's a little more engaging where the kids are interacting with each other, but without giving the teachers an extra job that they have to come up with all of this stuff. So just using this opportunity that we're hoping to have device-free schools, that we're not just taking away personal devices, but then using school-issued devices inappropriately.
Yeah. Thank you for that point. That just reminded me, I should have said this early on, and now I've lost the letters. It's I H something. But in August, when we come back, we will work on revising, there's a whole separate policy that is specifically around use of district or school-issued devices. We're going to need to update that because it does have language related to the use of student personal devices. And when we do that, we could potentially look at it to see if it addresses the concerns that you're raising as well. And then there is already work being done. There, there are different programs you can use to, for a teacher to see what's on a student's screen. And the one, Dr. Scallon, oh, it's Class Schools, is the one that we're piloting for Chromebooks. So that is a, you know, it is a tool that's possible for us to, to, to use on computers.
I just think it's really important if we're, if the reason that we pass the cellphone policy is to, you know, increase interaction among students and improve social emotional wellness, that we're really using that as our guiding principle for all device use.
Thank you. Thank you. Just one thing, I had a follow-up question about the timing of communications, like when we anticipate like the first district-wide communication coming out around this. I didn't know if there was an answer to that.
Well, I was hoping to do it after this conversation happened, but we need to talk about the specific day because obviously students are now not in school. So.
I just think it would be, yeah.
So, so the initial, initial communication out will just be sort of, not everyone is aware that this process has been going on and some are aware, but may not know kind of where we've landed. So it'll be pretty introductory and then we'll do, you know, we'll do a series. And as we're heading into the new school year, there will be district-level and school-level communications to make sure that we're just kind of great, not overdoing, but.
I was just hoping we would catch this first wave. And then one thing that I feel like is missing, and I know that we are legally responsible for providing interpretation services. But, you know, I heard from a lot of multilingual families that they often have a hard time just calling the school. And I do think it would be great to call out in this that, like, there needs to be a known system for connecting multilingual families to interpretation upon, you know, calling schools and subsequent communication to multilingual families to help build their trust around that. That also came up in public affairs as well. I, you know, leave it to you, but I, I do think a call out feels important around that.
Yeah. So Chair Lentz.
Maybe I missed it.
Yeah, well, but I, I would like to look at that with you just to see, or maybe you can look at it and, you know, and let me know. But in section eight, it's a fairly long section. The second paragraph, the system at each school must also, must include ways for families to communicate in their home languages and ensure accessibility for people with hearing speech and/or visual disabilities. This may be Reach My Teach if that meets the needs of the school community. However, it may also include a system for receiving parent calls via staff and/or multilingual answering service.
Sorry, I did not see that.
Well, but I don't know if that gets fully at what you want. So we can, we can maybe beef that up if, if you want to give suggestions.
Board member Ali, and then we'll come to board member Opperman.
I think one suggestion that I'm thinking about is, I don't know if this is like a, we should do it, but psychologically, when like removing yourself from any type of, you know, the practice that you're, you're, you're going to do, it's going to cause a little bit of, you know, frustration, agitation, you know, like they're not going to be able to sit around and things like that. So I don't know if, if it would be helpful to, to, to make a, send like a bulk email to the teachers and administrators about like, what's a possibility that could have, that could happen psychologically in the beginning of the school year when this occurs. So it doesn't seem like we have to, or they have to discipline every child that like walls, that wilds out.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, that's a great point. That was one of the things that was interesting when we went and visited Bath Morse High School, they talked about how the yonder representatives came and provided training for them, which they will do for us too, assuming we do sign an agreement with them. But part of that training was exactly that. It was sort of around, how do you help everybody make this shift in practice? And, you know, it's a pretty strongly developed habit for a lot of young people, a lot of, a lot of older people. And, you know, and they, they gave advice like, you know, don't fight a student over keeping the pouch on the desk because they may just need to hold it there for a while, right? So kind of helping people think through like where to, where to push them, where to just sort of let some stuff go. And then they had also created there, it didn't last long, they didn't feel like they needed it, but they had a group session set up for students that were really kind of struggling with letting go and breaking that habit. They ran that for a few weeks and then most of the students were doing okay.
Board member Opperman?
Thank you. Going back to the parent communication, particularly when language issues might be a part of it, but just in general, I want to acknowledge that there are some fabulous people who work in our front offices in every school that do an exceptional job at that. And I, I appreciate that. I also know that some people have difficulties following through. And I think in some cases in this situation, I strongly suspect that somebody might actually try to sabotage this from just conversations I've had at the schools. And so I would just hope to reinforce and support the front office so that they feel that they can be supportive of this.
Thank you. Thanks, board member Opperman. Vice Chair Bando, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about how many more rules are we going to need because it's already 14? And I feel like sometime we have a lot, it's so difficult to navigate or to, to follow those rules. So I know it may be a working document. So are we going to keep adjusting more, we, we're going through the process or maybe reducing or are we going to keep adding rules on the top of those?
Right. I don't expect this to get a lot longer.
Okay.
But the other thing to remember is that this is primarily to guide the schools and the district and how we implement. So while it's available to the public, it, this isn't really our primary sort of means of communicating, you know, for families. That will be hopefully in more digestible formats. But this helps us, you know, guide across schools to have some consistency in implementation.
Okay.
But I, but you're right, it's already pretty long and no, I don't, I don't want to lengthen it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Question for the chair, when did we, did we agree on when we're going to come back and take a look at this? Like, is it going to be a quarter of the year? Is it going to be half?
We haven't figured out, we don't have the total fall plan set yet, but I anticipate us knowing that by August before the year.
Probably.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? All right then. Thank you very much, Dr. Warren.
Appreciate the feedback.
And thank you all, board members. And now we're going to move into our second workshop of the night. I just have to get a different document up. So at the board retreat on last Sunday, one of the things that was talked about from the, from the board was a potential proposal for updating policy BDE or, which is the board committee structure. The last time the committee structure was updated was when I came on the board in whatever year that was. So it was at the very beginning of my, my special term that that was updated. Did we have, so the board had some conversation about what that could potentially look like and came to consensus on a couple of things. But then after the meeting, there were a couple of folks that reached out and felt like the, there were some things that they wanted to continue to discuss around this. And it also was not super clear about the why that we were taking up potential changes to the committee structure. So I wanted to just revisit kind of the purpose of the potential changes, revisit the places where the board was able to get to consensus to. And then I'll offer up kind of space for board members to express additional thoughts to see if there's any part of this that we need to revisit. And also the timing of this is, you know, we are, you know, I think across the district, we are trying to get schedules and things scheduled earlier, which helps build systems around them. So this is probably like the earliest that we've ever considered this. So I, I understand that the timing feels different for folks and part of it is that we're trying to, you know, at least have some like directional pieces set so that we can, we can make schedules and, and plan for staff time throughout the year. So from my experience as chair and also feedback that I have heard from other people on the, the board and community, that there have been three bodies of work that really haven't had space and time to be addressed in our current committee structure, which is three regularly meeting committees and that meet once a month. And those three bodies of work are kind of like curriculum and student outcomes, which often, you know, falls under curriculum and policy. But for the last two years, that committee has really only been working on policy. Facilities and really thinking about like, do we have a more intentional plan around our facilities, a 10-year master plan? And then also our legislative work, which happens at a very minimal basis right now. It's largely something that I hold, but also is increasingly more important, especially as the state is looking to potentially make changes to the EPS funding formula. So the, there was also feedback from some board members that either longer meetings or more frequent meetings would allow for more work to be done in committee. Right now, if you come to committee meetings, a lot of the, a lot of it is just like reporting out as opposed to like work sessions. So at the board retreat, we talked about potentially adjusting from three committees to five. The proposed model for 25, 26, having a finance and personnel committee, an operations and facilities committee, a policy committee, and a curriculum and academic success committee, and then finally a public and legislative affairs committee. And after some conversation, sorry, let me stop on the consensus parts, but we also were able to talk about kind of like condensing times for committees to one to two days a week and having like a first block and second block to try to create some efficiencies around that. And then having committees work or meet twice a month. There was a sentiment that if, part of what is hard with committees is if they get canceled for any reason, rescheduling them is incredibly hard. So this would mean that if, you know, committees were scheduled for twice a month and needed to be canceled, one needed to be canceled for any reason, that it would not be needing to be rescheduled. One of the things that was brought up in the increase of, you know, committees is that we would need more people to chair committees, but committees could be smaller. And so at the board retreat, there were several items that we got to consensus on about moving committee meetings to one day a week, which was Monday. And to continue them virtually, there was some conversation about whether they should be in person or not. We also agreed that we would move from three to four committees. So five felt like a stretch, but four seemed okay and that they would meet twice a month on the same week as board meetings and then two weeks after. So essentially creating kind of like some space between those meeting weeks. And so those are the places that we got to consensus to. So I would just, you know, open the floor to folks that wanted to, you know, voice any other thoughts or proposed changes that they would like to make. And then we can revisit as a board.
One last clarifying question. When you say it's going to go on every other week, is it all four of them going to go on every other week or is it two and then two?
All four.
Okay. So all four can go, so twice a month? Okay, so all four can go. So twice a month.
Yes. Yeah, Board Member Upperman.
I appreciate we're getting to think about consistent, easy to re, to organize. Public knows what we're doing. Um, it's easy to schedule. Um, I had a question about moving things to Monday, moving committee meetings to Monday for the staff. Um, and it, it dawned on me that it would move a lot of pressure to get, do something on a weekend. And working on the weekend, I mean, that in order to be ready, four committees on or five committees on a Monday, that um, you know, things have to be ready a week ahead of time. But, you know, the, the pressure of getting everything else done, et cetera, et cetera. So um that is a, a point I wanted to make. Um, I think, I also think five committees is a good idea. And, and how to do that, um, because policy and curriculum do need to be separated. Um, I do think that facilities need a lot of attention. And, you know, if you're putting that up against the budget or you're putting that up against uh personnel matters. You know, it's getting neglected. It has been neglected, just like curriculum has been neglected. And actually, those are the two things that hit the kids right. It is where, where are they doing and what are they learning? So um that's my two cents on that. I liked what we originally started, which was every Tuesday. Same day, the week, same time, um, the day. A regular pattern. Easy to adjust. If you um have bad weather, they lose a committee meeting and a board meeting. If they're right back next to each other. Um, alternating Monday, Tuesday on alternating weeks. Which week is this? You know, I, I I'm not as busy as you all are. That's not true, but I will, I will, I will say that I think people have other responsibilities that they have, and I do believe that it, it is easier for people to have a regular pattern. It decreases stress and by and large on everybody. So that, those are my four cents.
Thank you, Board Member Upperman. Other thoughts? Yep. Headboard Member Lena.
Sure. Yep, I know that at the um retreat, we came to consensus about the Monday, Tuesday, but I have a strong preference for every Tuesday for the reasons that Board Member Upperman stated. Um, simplifying things, you know, having consistency in terms of uh, home life, regularity, it, and also not conflicting with city council. Um, and if people want to attend our meetings and their meetings, or if we have people on staff that need to go to city council, but that, that would be my preference. Um, whether or not we have four committees or five, I defer to people who have more experience.
Yeah. Other, other thoughts? Board Member Ellie?
I ain't got no problem.
Board Member Bryden or Vice Chair Bando, do you have um thoughts that you would like to share?
Uh, I think I already made myself clearly during the retreat. I'm, I'm kind of a little open because I left already the, the the Tuesday for everything for the board. And uh, morning, evening tour, I'm open. So it any can, anyways, are we going as a, as a group? I can make it Monday or Tuesday. I'm, I'm all right.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bando. Um, uh, Board Member um Bryden, go ahead.
Yeah, I shared my thoughts um during the retreat, so I'm not going to go over them again. Um, and I just said a broader level, I would uh, say that I think this is part of a bigger topic where we need to make sure that we are setting reasonable and clear expectations for board service and making sure that those expectations are um in alignment with what we collectively think is appropriate to allow um various uh types of people in our community to do this work.
Um, uh, any other thoughts? So um, just to respond, Board Member Bryden, um, so I have uh started to work on some roles and responsibilities. Um, documents for each, for board chair, for committee chair, for board members. Um, I have heard that very clearly from folks that it would be helpful to have more information about expectations. I think in the history of board service, that has never existed. So we are, um, I think it is uh very much um uh, a function of public service and government that that doesn't exist. Like, I think that that is just really the way that the system was built, and I am more than happy to um try to put a container on kind of like our, our roles, also acknowledging that we are a responsive body, and so we can come up with kind of um as much as we can, but also just like, we will need to acknowledge that there is gray area in the way that we have to show up. Um, uh, and, you know, I think I have also heard and felt um myself specifically that, you know, um, for those of us with young children, there are barriers to service. For those of us that holds more than one job, there are barriers to service. Um, there are a number of barriers that I think would be great to come back to uh in August. Um, to have a bigger conversation both around the roles and responsibilities of each of the um uh positions that are available, but then also kind of like barriers to service and if there are um, solutions that we could be putting in place uh as much as the system allows. Um, and I'd be happy to, to do that in, in, in a workshop in the early meetings of, of August. Um, you know, I also want to um uh, just acknowledge the, kind of like what I'm hearing tonight is, is more conversation, but I'm not quite sure there, there feels like a compelling reason to move away from the consensus that we already got to. It, feel free to push, push back on, on this. Um, folks, like there, I, I'm hearing preferences for a different thing, but it doesn't feel like there is like a other than ease for some people, there doesn't feel like a, a reason to revert to the, to the all. Um, and I don't mean to dismiss kind of like what you're saying, um, Board Member Lena. Um, I, I recognize that, but I um like, I a, a also know and Board Member Bryden, like, you know, I know that you have Tuesdays are very hard days for you. And to pile up everything on Tuesday when we know that we have a board member who has like real challenges with Tuesdays, that doesn't seem like the direction that I would, I would prefer for us to go. Um, so I, I, I'm curious, like, where does the board think we should go with this conversation? Do we leave the consensus? Do we try to um adjust somehow? Board Member Upperman?
Well, I respect what you're saying. I respect the fact that you spend so much time with the board with your, and juggling your son with that. And um, my Lena's doing the same and all. Um, and Member Bryden is also. On our first consensus vote, it was everyone was pretty much Tuesdays were fine. And I appreciate exactly why I remember Bryden spoke up. And we tried to make adjustments for that. And I came back from that and set thought. And this is not to be negative towards any, but fact is that we make adjustments for just doing this professionally. We get paid for making adjustments to our lives. We get paid to have babysitters. We get paid to um do whatever we need to do to, to have transportation to get here, to make the time to, and all. And I, it's just seems, it just seemed to me that we, we made a, a sympathetic, and I am sympathetic, gut reaction. Um, when the consensus was going in another direction, um, a lot. So that's just my feeling on it.
Vice Chair Bando, go ahead.
You, I think uh, just coming back on that, I, I've, uh, that's just a uh, opinion that I'm bringing on the table is that if we combine, if we, if we have to bring back the, the four committees instead of five, I mean, combining back the financial community operation, why we don't keep that one on Monday and have, and having other committees on Tuesday. So I think it's just one committee can be on Monday and everything else on Tuesday, so we can balance and accommodate each of us on the, on those two days. So if uh, Member Bryden can lead, still leading the operation and have that one on Monday with a couple of uh colleagues, and then we can have the three ones on Tuesday. So we can, we, you can accommodate everybody. So that's just my two cents.
What I, what I'm hearing you say, um, Vice Chair Bando, is that if a, uh, Board Member Bryden continued to chair finance, that finance would continue on Mondays, we'd put the other committees on Tuesdays. A possibility that would then kind of like find a happy medium here?
I thought of that.
Board Member Ellie?
I'm open for both. Just let y'all know. I don't got no problem.
Well, I think that is helpful to know who has flexibility here and who, who doesn't. Um, uh, Board Member Bryden, um, would you be able to kind of um respond to the proposal that is um being suggested right now that finance would continue to stay on Monday?
I, um, Vice Chair Bando, I really appreciate that suggestion. Um, as I said in the uh retreat, I am not looking to get special treatment. Um, I am I, I hope that it did not come across as though I was. Um, and I am, um, yep, if, if we move in the direction that Vice Chair Bando um suggested, that would work for me. Thank you.
And I, I also just want to like um correct the, the um, the narrative a little bit. Like, I don't think anybody here is looking for special treatment. I think that we are trying our best to operate as one team that takes into consideration the needs of everyone here. And I am more than willing to accommodate those needs as we can. Board Member Lena?
Thank you. I have a question, which I know when we started the conversation about um, rescheduling the curriculum committee meet, or I mean, the committee meetings. One of the reasons was to simplify accessibility for staff. Um, and not just accessibility, but just making more consistency for them. So I would want to know what the preference is for staff.
Yeah. Um, Dr. Scallon or Dr. Warren, I don't know if you want to weigh in on that.
Uh, we'll work around whatever you prefer. The staff on in terms of staff liaison for finance, HR and operations, it would be me. Um, and so I can work around either one. Um, and in terms of other folks such as uh Jennifer Slaybank, Tamra and others for operations, uh, they would just be doing the one committee, um, except when they join policy periodically. So we'll, we'll work around your request.
Did you have a question? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to voice my own opinion since you said you wanted to hear. I think this is a really workable schedule for me personally, but also I, I just kind of like the idea of like forty eight hours of, of pretty intense work. You know, uh, the same week and then a week off. Um, that, it gives you lots of time to reflect and communicate with people and you know, it's sort of, it seems more manageable than every single week, but I'm not arranging for childcare. I do, however, play in two bands that meet on Monday and Tuesday nights. This would let me stay in them, but that's just me.
No, I, I think this is a very helpful conversation. Um, yeah, Board Member Lena, go.
Thank you. Yeah. And I just wanted to state that I can be flexible, and I just wanted to make sure that we were making a decision that took into consideration all of the factors because the conversation happened quickly. And I felt like at the last minute, there were sort of like, have we thought about this? Have we thought about this? And I, I left having questions. So I wanted to just make sure that we came to a consensus that everyone did feel like it made sense why we're making this choice.
Other, other thoughts that need to come out? Yep.
I thought I, in the back of my mind, in this process of trying to see whether I was saying anything tonight, I also thought of what um Vice Chair Mondo had said. Understanding individual situations, at least at this time. Um, things may change. That's the other thing is things can change and it might be that some band practice gets done on Wednesdays or something. Now just, or whatever, but uh, that would be my thought.
Okay. So, um, then yes?
Can I just ask another question? Um, I'm just gonna speak out of turn a little bit for you, Chair, and then you can tell me not to do it again. Um, also want to be sensitive to your timing and the fact that um moving the split committees uh will put you at least six nights a week, six nights a month plus uh whatever we do for community engagement on it. So I think part of it was also about managing the chair. And you're in the role now.
Yeah.
And hopefully forever. Um, but at some point, there will be somebody else in the role. And so just it is a hard role to recruit for. And so just acknowledging that piece.
Yes. Well, I think it's, it's, uh, to me, it does not feel different than what I'm currently doing. Um, I, like, I actually think that having things more condensed in whatever way we go is just more helpful to me. Um, or whoever is in the chair. So um, uh, position. Um, so I think, uh, I appreciate you voicing that concern. Cause also I'm facilitating, so I can't think about myself too much while I am, I'm leading the conversation. Um, so I think I i- am hearing a little bit of uh, maybe consensus around the Monday night for finance and Tuesday nights for everything else, which would mean that no, did I say that wrong?
I'm, I'm not disagreeing with that.
I just saw a lot of faces happening over here and I wasn't sure what.
What do you think?
Sorry, I.
Board Member Lena?
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you. I um I wasn't sure what we had decided on. So I thought maybe we were going back to just the Monday, Tuesday, just for simplicity. So I was confused.
Uh, yes, okay. I don't think we've decided anything. I was gonna see if we could do like a little consensus thing around.
Yeah.
Board Member Bryden?
I see. Yeah. I have a question. I'm wondering if I'm wondering if it would be and um staff can certainly poke holes in this idea. Um, if this is not a great idea, but I'm wondering if we could say that Mondays and Tuesdays are available for committee meetings. And then once committees are formed, the chair will uh assess with the members of that committee within Monday and Tuesday time blocks, what would be workable for the members of that committee? Is that doable?
Question I would have is if we're having two different meeting times is for any committee that is selected on Tuesday.
Mm hmm.
We would need to have a first block and a second block probably. And so it that's the only piece. Um, and so we'd still need to balance availability of members to participate. And so we may end up with two blocks on Monday, two blocks on Tuesday. Uh, so.
What I, what I would envision would be, for example, to like, if you think about Mondays and Tuesdays, the available blocks of time within those two days of the week and identify, you one, two, three, like four blocks of time, like two on Mondays, two on uh, two on Mondays, two on Tuesdays, and to be able to then have the committee chairs again um, discuss with committee members. Uh, what is, what would be first choice, what would be doable? Um, and then the committee chairs could get together and plug in the different committees and the available blocks of time based on committee members availability. Is that doable?
I thi, I mean, I think it could, I think it could be doable. I'm not sure from a staffing end. I think we, you know, have to make sure that we have staff available for each of the blocks. So there would be a question mark above that. But I'm, I'm not sure if we need that.
Yeah. I would, I would say my preference would be either I would say my preference would be either Tuesdays only, or Mondays is committee, Tuesday is school board, week off. That's just because it's, those are the two simplest options in my mind.
Yes. So that is what I would like to put forward, because a Tuesdays only does not seem to meet the needs of everyone on this board. So I would like to put forward the other option, which is finance on Monday, Tuesday, everything else. No.
Kinsley, you say that again. I think I'm trying to say what you're saying, and it's just not coming out the right word. Option one, not as a preference, but just first option would be Mondays are reserved for committees, Tuesdays are school board meetings, and one week. And then the second week, there are no meetings.
The one that?
That would be an option.
A week off and between?
Yes, like what, yeah.
Okay.
That would be an option.
So I love a workshop.
The other option would be, school board related business only occurs on Tuesdays, whether it's a school board meeting or a committee meeting. Just because those two options, in my mind, feel like the simplest form of making this work.
Okay, so did we just go back to our previous consensus?
We did, yes.
But now we feel like we've had a better conversation and we're all on the same page?
Yes.
Right? Okay. So we're going back to the consensus that we had at the board retreat, which was to have board meetings on Tuesdays and committee meetings on Mondays, on the same week, and then we will have off weeks. Beautiful. Okay, thank you. I appreciate everyone hanging in there. I also think that having workshops after board meetings, I would like us to have more of these in the future. I'm sorry, Board Member Ali, your eyes just got really big.
No, we're good. I'm just kidding.
But I think it will help us have a little bit less of a structured conversation to get to some things that are not working and how to build solutions around them. So thank you.
I better go this time, because we were offered two months. But you keep going if you want.
Why, thank you. I will, we're going to go ahead and end now. So thank you all very much. Yes, Board Member Opperman?
Question was asked of me just recently about what day we, which week we do this on. And also, there was a question that came up about when do we have our retreats? That came up in discussion and all. So to bring those points up, I just.
Yes, those things will be in our August meetings. That's, I am anticipating that.
So is our August meeting the first Tuesday or the second Tuesday?
Do you have an answer to that, based on this conversation?
Yes, if committees are on Monday, as was selected. So since committees are on Monday, we need to do it opposite city council. And so that would be the second and fourth Tuesday. And we have a draft of the calendar, and there are conflicts on a handful of them, but otherwise, it lines up. And so we can share that out with folks.
And do we have to change a policy for that? We need to double check?
I don't know, we'll check.
Okay. Great, that could be easy. We could do it at the first meeting.
So I got an email with that earlier today. That's what I've been looking at, a proposed schedule, no?
You got it in preparation for the retreat, because it was a draft for the retreat, and then they just updated it. And so you may have seen that.
Oh, because I just started my school email. That makes sense. Okay.
Yep, that's why.
Thanks.
Beautiful. Thank you all very much for your work.
Thank you, guys.
All right.